Educating, Informing, Serving. TV, Keeping Government Honest.
Okay, I'd like to call the Board meetings ordered for the Wind of Northeast Supervisor Union. We haven't seen Jack yet, so I'm gonna sit in for him. If he shows up, we'll let him have the table here. Introductions, if we could go from the people at home first. Kathy?
Kathy Siana-Goodwin from Grafton.
Lynn?
Lynn Morgan from Athens.
Hardy?
Hardy Earl from Grafton.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed Deb Wright.
Bellas Falls Union High School, Representative Rockingham.
Karen?
Karen Blanchard, Westminster Board.
Persella?
Persella Lambert, Representative for Rockingham.
Cheryl?
Cheryl Charles, Chair of the Westminster Board.
Molly Bannack, Westminster, Chair of the Bellas Falls Board and is sitting in for Jack tonight.
Chris?
Chris Kibbe, Rockingham Board and WNESU Treasurer.
Brenda?
Brenda Parkes, Bellas Falls Union High School, Rockingham.
Andy?
Andy House, Superintendent of Schools.
Jim?
Jim Vazina, Finance.
Thank you, everyone. Oh, I missed one.
Jennifer Keenan, Wind of Northeast Early Education.
Thank you. Adjustments to the agenda. I would like to move Finance and B1 up underneath Review and Approve Board Minutes. So I'd like it to be between 5:00 and 6:00. Just move Finance up there. And 8A is Novus Energy. We have a gentleman here that is gonna present to us, and I'd like to put Finance.
And Jack has joined us, and Margie from Westminster has joined us.
Okay. I have one more adjustment that we'd like to make, and maybe not because Jack is here. Jack, I started, wasn't sure where you're at or how you're doing, so do you wanna speak to 6A, number 2? We didn't know what that was for. I can't hear ya.
There we go. Remind me, 6A?
6A says Instruction and Innovation.
I'm trying to remember what that is. Let's take that off for the moment.
I think it was a report from DAV, and with me being out last week and the events this week, she just hasn't been able...
Okay, so if it's okay with you, Jack, I'd like to take that off.
Okay, that's fine.
Jack, do you wanna take over?
Actually, you're doing fine. I'm gonna let...I think it's important to try to be there physically, and I just couldn't make it tonight for a whole variety of reasons. My apologies. Had a little car issue.
No worries, I'll try to make you proud. All right, so we have our adjustments to the agenda. Communication and Public Comments.
I'm here for Communication and Public Comment.
Go ahead, David.
My name's David Clark. I represent Westminster on the Union High School Board, although I am not a member of this Board. Here's my comment. It's this. There's very little doubt that the WNESU District would benefit from a robust birth through K, pre-K program. How to prioritize this need in the face of other needs is another question. It is unfortunate. The planning document dated October 14 is released on the day of this meeting, October 26. The...number 1, the conclusion of the October 6 Esser Early Committee was that the numbers don't work, and here's why. A, proposed pre-K would require a continuous paid-up 95% attendance rate. B, the funding would necessitate cannibalizing 50% of the local independent centers' enrollments. The second point, the exclusionary nature of the proposal means that Athens and Grafton can just go pound sand. Three, the attendees at the October 6 Committee meeting agreed this proposal was dead on arrival. See note number 1 above, and I'll circulate this when I get done here, email, so everyone has a paper copy, or at least an electronic copy. Number four, we have other urgent infrastructure needs, most particularly the high school that's squandering up to $5 million on a building project we don't need, doesn't address. Five, and the final one, I've asked for a copy of that October 6 meeting tape on which you can see your pre-K committee reach these same conclusions in real time. Thank you, Madam Assistant Chair.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Anybody online?
I don't know. Peter Burkstrom just joined us, so I don't know.
If anyone at home would like to speak, Peter, I see you've unmuted yourself. Introduce yourself and go ahead.
Okay, I'm trying to turn on my video here. Hi, I'm Peter Burkstrom. I live in Saxons River, and I'm here because there's an item about the solar array that Novus Solar is building, and I'm the Town Energy Coordinator. Thanks.
So you're here in support of that? You'd like to maybe be available for questions after this jump? Okay, he's shaking his head, so...
Yes.
All right. Peter will make sure we recognize you. Anyone else out there?
That's Margie, she's...
Okay, got it, thank you. Okay, sorry.
Number 5.
I am on number 5, thank you. Reviewing a few Board Minutes of September 21.
I'll make a motion to approve those. I'm sure everybody has them.
Does anybody have anything they would like to change on those minutes? Okay, there's a motion made to approve the Board Minutes for September 21 as written, and I'll take a roll call. Kathy?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
This is her vote.
Oh, not a voting member, okay, I'll get that off the list, though. Thank you. Deb?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Hardy?
Yes.
Zilla?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And Brenda?
Yes.
Okay, the minutes are approved for September 21. Now we're gonna kinda go into our funny little change here. We're gonna move to 6B, and that's gonna be Finance with Jim. Jim, you have the floor.
Well, actually, maybe me.
And Jim.
So we also had a Finance Committee update.
Right. I'm trying to bundle all that, so I apologize. Been a little clearer there, so...
So I'm okay with that. There's no football on tonight, but I'm okay with bundling.
I brought Ricky, so you can't turn off the Wi-Fi today, so...
So the Committee of Finance, and you and Jim are both gonna speak, so I'm gonna get rid of 6C, too.
Yep.
All right, all right, you two have the floor.
So the Budget Committee met today, and we're...the good news is, we're, I think, headed towards being able to bring a budget by the end of November for approval. I think we all feel that's a very real possibility, and it's because of Mr. James Benzina and a lot of the materials that he's generated, and hopefully for all your member districts, too, as you start the budgeting. Because it makes it really easy to kind of pick on the points that we need to make decisions I'm not...I can't give you a figure. The good news kinda ends there.
Enough said.
Yeah, I know. I think you should be prepared for probably a 10% increase in your assessments, just because there are so many things hitting the budget. Today, we cut, I think, about a half a million dollars out, and there's some more adjustments that we have to make, and so we added in a school bus, too. So there's some give and take. There were a couple of errors in previous year's budget that actually weren't to our favor, or at least make it look better, because there were things that didn't need to be in this current years, but that's just looks. I mean, that isn't gonna make you feel better when you pay your taxes. So we worked through quite a large number of proposed positions today. There's a split between the grants and the regular, the budget, and we worked our way through those, and some that Superintendent proposed, and so we're probably, next time, which will be two weeks from today, probably really look at a kind of a finished first draft and be pretty close to bringing a budget forward. And I'm happy to take questions from people if you have any signal.
Go ahead, Jack.
Yeah, I've had a couple of people request when we can do this, whether or not we can put the working budgets or the proposed budgets up online. I know that we don't wanna do it when we still have a whole bunch of blank numbers, but if we think we're getting close to something that can be posted for comment and input, people seem to be interested in doing that, and I'm wondering about your thoughts about that.
Well, I think the budget needs to be pretty close to being finished and accepted before you do that. You certainly wouldn't wanna put what we're working off of right now, because there's just a lot of changes and moving parts, and, you know, people would look at it and go, "Oh, my God, they're doing it," and it's like, "No, we've already changed that."
Well, that was kind of the pushback from my end, but, you know, we don't have the equivalent of hearings in our system, and I think people that either have or imagine themselves to have some fiscal expertise, at least there's one or two people that have talked to me, have asked about it, and I'm wondering if that's something we might, at some point, be able to do in advance of bringing it before the Board as a whole, so that we can at least solicit a few comments before we subject it to an up or down vote of the community.
We could try to do that when we have, really, a finished draft of it. I think that would be...and I would say invite people to come to our Budget Committee meetings or contact us if they have questions. The next meeting is on the November 9th at 3 o'clock at the SU.
Yeah, by the way, I do apologize for not coming today. I've been really trying to debate how much I wanna be in the process, given that I won't be there dealing with the consequences of it next year, and I'm just not quite sure what my role should be in that regard, how much I should have my thumb on the scale.
Well, we made good progress today, so...
Maybe my absence helps, who knows?
Chris, Jim McCullough here. Sorry I'm late. Can you hear me?
Hi, Jim.
Hi. I think that's a great idea, but to have a, like, a meeting once the budget is, you know, 99.9% complete, I think that would work better than people coming to a budget session, I think, but it would be a pretty close to a finished product.
Yeah, that's a good idea, too. I don't know how much interest there is, but maybe there is. And by the way, Jim, maybe we can talk tomorrow sometime, since you missed today, and give you the exciting play-by-play of what we did.
Okay. Thank you.
Jim is on the committee, that's...
Yep. So the only thing that, I mean, you said up 10%, and, you know, none of us want to see huge increases, but when you look at how much increased everything is with your, you know, just your home budgets and your groceries and everything else, it's prehared not to think that we aren't gonna have an increase next year.
Well, we've got a new collective bargaining agreement, and for, you know, both support staff and teachers that have increases, we have an increase in health insurance to bake in, so just doing the...it's kinda tough. But I think we have a good budget going, you know, and the process seems to have worked pretty well.
Anyone have any questions for Chris or Jim? Jim, do you have anything to add?
No, but if I can just introduce the accounting arm of the SU, and that is Erica Decker and Shirley Lynch, who are the strong arms in the Finance Office, and they've been doing just an awesome job, and I just, I say, "Wow." Thank you both. I do wanna mention that the budgeting process has changed a little bit, because you now have an integrated preliminary budgeting system now, where it's gonna crank in all of the ups and downs, and this is for both your individual budgets and the high school. So as you're making changes, it will integrate fully into the revenue piece and property tax piece. So it's awesome.
So as the principals are working on their budget, it will change?
As the information comes in.
As the information gets put in?
Yes.
That's great.
So I think we're gonna do okay.
I don't know what I'm gonna do for Kenlin this year, but...
It'll be plenty. And I just wanna publicly, again, thank Jim and his team for what they've done, and also for the Finance Committee, because it has made it so much easier this year, even for myself, to get through this, and...but, yeah, the work they've done is just impactful.
Thank you very much. Thank you, ladies.
I have another question, Molly. Jim McCullough, I'm sorry. I missed the Finance Committee today. Did you say the budget is up 10%?
No, Jim, I was looking at the assessments. I don't have a number for the budget, so I was just in a general way looking at the different assessments, and I...you know, before we went in today, they were up between 10% and 20%, depending upon which one you were looking at, and so they're less now, but I'll go through it with you tomorrow, and then Benzina's next iteration of this should...it should start to look pretty much complete, but Andy needs to have a couple of conversations around before we do that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Just one question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, now, do...is, in your judgment, is this mostly just simply the, what we thought was a 7% salary increase baked in, and just this is how it all metabolizes when you do that, and the insurance, or are there particular areas that have seen significant jumps that might be worthy of additional attention?
We put a lot of focus on positions, and some proposed new positions, and some positions that were proposed to move into the regular budget, and also one that should be in there that wasn't. ELL must have been in a grant, you know, who knows? ELL needs to be in your regular budget, English Language Learning. So that was an example, actually, of an omission that cut the wrong way, because that needs to be included. But we went through eight or 10 different positions today, and that's really been the bulk of our work for the past meeting or two.
Thanks.
Persella, do you have your hand up?
No. Sorry.
I think we're...it looks like Finance is good. Thank you very much. Jim, have a safe trip home.
Thank you. Thank you. Get some rest.
Do you need to be here with Alex, or is he gonna be okay on this one?
I'll be here with Alex.
Oh, okay.
All right, so next on board is, we're gonna move to 8A, Novus Energy. Alex, yeah, if you could come up so we can, everybody can see you. Just introduce yourself, and we'll give you 30 seconds.
Okay, that should be plenty of time. Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me. My name is Alex Provakis. My business, my company is named Novus Energy Development. We're out of Montpelier. We develop net metered community solar projects in Vermont. We've done it for the last 12 years or so. We've been fairly successful developing them primarily for schools and towns, nonprofits and hospitals, some businesses over that amount of time. About a year ago, we were chosen to work with the town of Rockingham to develop a 500KW project on their reclaimed gravel pit, or a portion of their reclaimed gravel pit, right off of 103 down the road from you. We, a year later, we now have our permit, and we'll be building that project in the spring, and talking with Peter Burkstrom, he's on the screen there, he's the Energy Committee Chair, and he's been instrumental with working with him over the years. He suggested reaching out to your school district, because he said, you know, you folks hadn't signed up for a project, and since the town has already signed up with our other project we did on Rockingham on another gravel pit right across the road about two years ago, I reached out to Andy and got a meeting with him and Jim to talk about taking power from this soon-to-be 500KW project down the road. And Jim is pretty familiar with how net metering works from some past experience, and he's basically said, "This all sounds really great. It's gonna save you folks around $12,000 a year." And he said, you know, "We have to wait till next year to start getting savings. We could use some right now." And I said, "Well, you know, this would be for that project, because we can't get you savings until we build it, but we do have another 500KW project that is now almost completely built and will be flipped on next month." And he said, "Well, that's great, that's interesting, maybe it's something we should look at." So over the course of the next couple of months, I got ahold of your school district's utility bills and reviewed them, and it shows that you could actually use the power from both solar projects, and it would save your school district roughly, starting around $22,000 a year. I do have, I don't know if these got passed out. I put some presentations together. I'll send a bunch this way. Would be a couple going down there. The way net metering works essentially is, we build a project, and there's a meter at the project, and the meter registers every kilowatt hour that the solar project produces, and that power is credited to your utility bill. There's no different, you don't, the way you receive power right now does not change. You still receive it the exact same way. This is more or less a financial transaction, where if you will Green Mountain Power $100, we credit you $100 with the solar credits. You turn around and pay the solar project $90, saving 10% on your power bill. It's a little more complicated than that in reality. There are certain credits you can't, there are certain charges you cannot credit against. These are called non-bypassable charges. They usually make up around 12% of the utility bill. So we've gone through all your utility bills. We've looked at allocating credits to all of your schools, and you can see that on the second page. And if you were to join these two projects, Novus Allen Solar, the one in Berry, that would start producing power next month, that would save you approximately a little over $11,000 a year. Novus Rock Pit Solar is the one down the road from you, starting next, when it's built next summer, that would save you a little over $12,000 a year. The rate these solar projects receive escalate with the rate of power. Historically, over the last 20 years, about 2% escalation. So your savings actually goes up slightly over the 20-year term of this contract. We've done these with a lot of schools, and what schools we haven't done them with, others have. Today, I don't know of many schools left that haven't signed up for these, quite honestly. On this page 6, we just, we were curious, so we went back and looked at some of the schools that we've signed up over the years. Berry Town, South Royalton School, Shelver Community School, Berry City Middle and Elementary School, Spalding Tech Center, Montpelier Schools, Union High School, Hazen and Hardwick Elementary. And these are the savings that they have enjoyed over the last, well, Berry Town started in 2014. Berry Town has saved over $115,000 since 2014. Spalding High School uses a fair amount of, uses 83% of a 500KW project. They've saved almost $150,000 over, since 2016. So this is real savings. These are real schools that have been saving for many years. One thing you'll notice is that the value that the solar credits receive has gone down. Every, pretty much every other year, it gets dimmed down. Started at around 21 cents, it's now at around 13 cents. We can still provide you savings with that 13 cents, and these projects are grandfathered in at that 13 cent rate, but since these projects have been grandfathered in, the rate has actually decreased even further. So jumping onboard now and not waiting till later does have some benefit to you. You know, there's a lot of information here, and I, you guys have been down this road before, so you're familiar with how solar work. I, the Rockingham project, I brought to the school district a few years ago, but I, it was late in the process, and ended up sending that power to the town of Rockingham and the library, and the Edgar May Rec Center, and they've been saving power ever since on that 500KW project.
Sending power directly?
No, it's a net metered system, so, yep, it credits onto the Green Mountain Power, no, it credits onto the Green Mountain Power bill, as I said. So is there any questions? I can get into more detail if we'd like. There's no cost to join. What you'd have to do is sign a net metering agreement, which is a standard agreement that's been signed by many of our schools and towns, and it's a 20-year agreement.
Is that negotiable? Hold on, hold on, hold on. I'm gonna, I'm gonna call, because everybody's got their hand up, and I got a mouthful, and I'm gonna wait till last. So Jack, you're first.
Okay, I'll admit that I'm probably been one of the people who has been skeptic of these third-party net metering arrangements, because the participating communities get a fairly small, generally, percentage of the savings, and when I hear things like a built-in... And when I hear things like a built-in, uh, increase of 2% a year, uh, actual cost per kilowatt around the country for renewable energy has been almost flat. And once you build a system like this, there really is no additional cost to the developer. So that's essentially a 2% guaranteed in profit when there's no additional cost. We sit on a square mile, or at least a high school, it's a square mile of land that you could do really quite interesting things with in terms of, of solar. Uh, I'm not sure that you necessarily need a third-party developer to help you. You might want to look at it, but I think that what I would suggest you all do is refer this to your finance committee, refer, suggest they begin work after budget season's done and take a hard look at the numbers and see if they actually work. I mean, I, I, I can only just say, I used to write on this subject on a weekly basis. Um, but it was a long time ago, so maybe my expertise isn't what it used to be. But let's at least take a look and see whether or not, A, this is the best approach and B, whether this is the best organization to do the work with. And I think the finance team are the guys to do it.
Marge, G, you're next.
Um, I was wondering if that, um, 20-year contract is negotiable? Like, can you go to a lower number of years?
N- no, 20 years is, is, is the contract term. Um, that's based on, on basically being able to finance this project with long-term debt. Um, 20 years is pretty much what you'd see on any other contract. It's not something just we do. It's a standard amount of time for these, for these deals.
Anyone on the cyber world have any other questions before I move on to my table?
We got to see any hands up.
I have, I have a question. I don't know how to put my hand up, but.
All right, Jim.
The, uh, there are, uh, if he's talking about all of the buildings, uh, you're talking about, uh, essentially four towns. And, uh, I just want to be sure that this would be handled, uh, building by building so that it would go, it would go to the specific town budget, uh, as opposed to the WNESU. Okay, so that's, that's my question.
Um, the, the town budget, so.
The tech school.
School district.
It'll go, yeah, so the way it works is that we take an allocation of the, of the, the amount of power that's produced and provide it to the schools based on how much power they use. So for example, uh, Novus Allen, the, the first project that'll be built, or that'll be starting next month, that group would be made up of basically this school using 91% of the power plus 9% going to the Grafton School because the Grafton doesn't use very much power. Um, the Novus Rock Pit Solar Group would be made up of 38% going to Bellas Falls Middle School, 20% going to Central School, 2% going to Superintendent's Office, 16% going to Saxon River and 24% going to Westminster, uh, School. Um, and those are just based on the amount of power that those meters in those schools use. We can't provide more credits than that school can use. So it's a fine balance to try to give you guys as much savings as you can without overcrediting any one meter. So that's why we allocate based on the amount of usage that each school uses. I'm not sure if that answers your question.
I think it does. I think, I think you're saying that.
Sorry, go ahead.
In this first one, the 91% would be credited back to the Bellas Falls Union High School, uh, account.
Correct, yeah, so essentially the way it works is, I, I don't know how you guys do your accounting, but the way it works is that the credits are applied to Bellas Falls Union High School's Green Mountain Power Bill. Directly, directly to the bill. And the same goes for all these schools. The, the credits are created at the solar project and they're directly allocated to your Green Mountain Power Bill for those individual schools.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, what do you got?
Uh, Alex, I, I've got a concern which deals with Global Foundries in Essex. Hmm. With, with them breaking off from Green Mountain Power.
Mm-hmm.
Who, who was the largest consumer of electric in the state of Vermont? And I'm worried about budgets as we're developing them. How's that gonna affect our budgets next year?
How would that affect your budget? So you're suggesting because Global Foundries is going away, that your power rates are gonna go up?
Well, there's a lot of capacity that Green Mountain Power has. And losing their biggest customer?
Mm-hmm.
Holy cow. I mean, how do you balance that?
Yeah, Green Mountain Power, you, you know, is the largest utility in our state by far.
Yeah.
Um, essentially, if you look at a utility map, anywhere where there's power being used, Green Mountain Power has a line going.
Yeah.
So yes, Global Foundries is a major user. I haven't read anything that indicates there's gonna be a major price increase in solar, or I'm sorry, in energy costs. However, if the price for power goes up, there's even more reason to sign up for a project like this because it'll guarantee you savings going forward.
What will they do with their surplus, surplus generation?
I, I don't know. I don't know. Um, you know, there, there's a lot of engineers that work in that department. I'm not an engineer. I don't pretend to be. So I, I don't know how electrons are moved around in terms of how they make that happen. Maybe they take less hydrocoated back power, which would be minor. Right now, the way Vermont calculates renewable energy is by taking a lot of hydrocoated back power. And in my mind, that's not really renewable energy. That's, anyway, we can get into that. I, I, local, small-scale solar projects like this, distributed energy is the future of, whether it's Vermont or the United States, it, the world is the, is the future. Is how energy is produced, is on a small scale, similar to the project we did in Rockingham right down the road, similar to the one we're doing across the street. Because the power isn't, you're not creating these huge power plants and you're sending them hundreds and hundreds of miles to the power source. I'm sorry, I digress. Uh, yeah, I can go on for a while now.
Uh, I got Chris next. I see you, Jack, and I see you, Karen.
So, um, where to start? Uh, so I joined Jack in the skeptics department because I've dealt with these proposals before. One thing I want to be really clear about, and I've had people mush this before, we wouldn't be using green energy. You're just, you're just getting a deal on your power bill. Yes, you are supporting the construction of a solar power array, which on the grand scheme is a good thing, but you're not going green. Okay, and you.
You mean your schools?
Yes, you're not. In fact, there's actually some disincentives to, to be more energy efficient once part of your bill is tied up with these things.
Well.
No, I know this to be true. Now, the other thing that you said that was not quite accurate is that all the contracts are standard. They're not. They're really complicated three-party agreements between the public entity, and they love public entities because we're gonna be around forever, right? That's, that's why these people come to us is because, you know, we're gonna continue to buy power for years and years. Um, it's between the power company, the developer, and the, and the public entity. And they're very complicated contracts and everyone is a little different. And I've had them reviewed by attorneys and I know a good attorney to review them and I'd love to get a copy.
Great, absolutely.
Of your contract.
Sure.
And, uh, if the board wants to throw it to the finance committee, I'm happy myself to take that on. I don't know about the other members, but they're so happy. But, uh, we, we, do that.
Um, can, can I just respond quickly to a couple of points if that's okay? Um, you're right, yeah, the, the renewable energy credits that these projects produce don't go directly to the school. So you can't say the school's 100% solar energy. Um, they get retired to the state of Vermont and they add towards Vermont's goal of becoming 90% renewable by 2050. So you are supporting solar energy for the state of Vermont. But, but correct, yes, the, the recs don't belong directly to the school. Um, as far as energy efficiency measures, these two projects, which is the maximum allowed under the statute, so the school districts are the only group in Vermont that can actually take more than a 500 KW. They were grandfathered in to allow an entire megawatt of net metered project, power to be allocated to them. Towns cannot, uh, businesses cannot. And the reason is because, you know, it's really good savings and I think everyone would continue to do this if they could take unlimited amount of solar energy. These two projects, um, don't nearly cover the amount of usage you, your school's used. So you could continue to put efficiency measures in there, cut your usage, and we still wouldn't.
With that portion of our bill that's not covered in the contract.
Sure, which is large. It's, it's very large. And the other piece that we've seen with schools and towns is that schools and towns are not necessarily reducing their energy usage. In fact, many times they're increasing their energy usage because they're putting in heat pumps and they're putting in electric, um, heating and cooling systems as opposed to, and moving away from oil and baseload power such as that. So although there may be some efficiency measures that are taken, um, if I were to bet, I would say you likely will have increased usage over the next few, you know, in the future because probably many of your systems will get converted from fossil fuel over to electricity, which is the way kind of the future is going. Everything's kind of going electric, as you know. Um, sorry, I didn't, I just wanted to point those.
Karen, you're next.
Oh, great, I thought it was Jack.
No, Jack's already had his time as last.
Okay. Um, thank you so much really for what you had to say. I, you know, I wanted to talk, two things. One, um, I do think this is a green option. And, uh, you know, going to a solar system, to me, rather than the alternatives, um, is, I think, a worthy endeavor for schools, I do. So, uh, you know, I think we need to investigate it and do the kinds of things, the due diligence about all of this. I was curious a little bit about whether there's a consortium. You know, there are a lot of, um, companies who are providing solar. And I don't know if you all get together and talk, you know what I mean? Or I'd love to see, I think, a little bit of a consortium of conversations um, around these groups.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that's all I wanted to say, is that you could talk to me. I'm, you know, I know they're businesses, but, you know, businesses get together.
I, I, thank you, first of all. Um, it's funny you should say that. The Renewable Energy Vermont Conference is tomorrow, for the next two days. And that's a yearly thing that happens up in Burlington where essentially every renewable energy, energy people from the utility all the way to developers or private businesses get together. And for two days, we do presentations and talk and shake hands and, and stuff like that. So it does happen. Probably not as much as it should. You're, you're right. But, but it does happen.
It's a challenge in the business community to think of ways in which to, um, think about creative alternatives to a competitive system and think about a more collective system. That's all.
I, I, you know, and just to that, I mean, I've never been more excited to be in renewable energy than I am today. And it, you know, it started, I mean, I've been doing it for a while now, but it's, the, the, the recent bill that Joe Biden signed, President Feinstein, is just really increasing, pushing towards energy, pushing towards energy storage, which is the holy grail of renewable energy, is the storage piece. You know, how you hold it while the sun's shining and you don't use the power, the wind's blowing and you can't use it. So there's a lot of opportunity and I'm, I'm really excited about it. Yeah.
Thank you, Karen.
So I, I appreciate you being here because it takes a lot to come into a small town and try to introduce something. Um, I, I do not agree. I, I don't believe that it's a green product. And, and one of the things that, I'm gonna say this, I don't wanna be the rotten apple in the room again, but I, but I think that we need to think about it and really, what we're, what I hear a lot about solar power is that what happens to all those panels when our kids have to take care of them? Because what I'm, what I'm reading and what I'm hearing is that, uh, that's, there's some, there's some pretty bad stuff in there that nobody wants to talk about because we're trying to say that it is, that it is green and it's better for the environment. And so, okay, I'll pull the farmer card for a minute. It takes a lot of land to, to use, to make these work. And what I'm reading and what I'm understanding is it, it's in 20, 25, 30 years, what are we gonna do with all these things? What are we doing to our kids? What are we doing to our grandkids? Most of us is probably our grandkids, but the point is, I am not against trying to do something better, but I want to know what it's gonna be in 30 years. Because I, it's, everything I've read in any kind of industrial magazine, any farming magazine, it doesn't give me any good information. Now, I get that it's probably a bias. I'm not on that. I'm not getting the magazines you're getting. But, um, I, whether it's on our land or not, I would stamp my feet probably if Jack told me it was gonna be on our land right now because I'm not sold on, it's not about today and my power bill today. Yes, it is. Yes, it is, absolutely. We gotta work. We gotta do the best we can for our taxpayer. But what are we doing? What are we doing about all these solar things that end up everywhere in 30 years? And how, how do we know? I've heard that they're not recyclable and a whole bunch of stuff. I'm not, I don't want you to defend yourself, but I'm telling you that those are my concerns.
Sure.
My concerns are, um, I don't see, so if you came in and said, you know, we were gonna get these humongous savings, then, you know, that kind of, you know, then it's, I, you know, maybe we don't think so much about, you know, the future, but, um, I, I'm not against you in, being in here and, and I appreciate knowledge. And, but I'm gonna, I want to see some real, I want to see some real background on what does happen. We're taking up a lot of land and we're taking, and so if that, if that's the best thing for that land right now, but what happens when they, they wear out, what happens? I, I want to know in 30 years what happens. And that's my, that's my, my biggest concern is that. And then, you know, how much of it is, are, you know, how much savings are we really gonna get? What I don't understand, so I'm just gonna tell this to you so that next time when you talk, I understand it better, you're telling us that a lot of the stuff on our bill does not qualify for that?
Fifteen percent of your bill, so most of your bill qualifies.
So I would be interested in, in, in what that means.
Yeah, so it says right here, actually, um, the, the non.
I just got this.
Yeah, no, I apologize. I, I should have sent this around early. The non-bypassable charges, which is that 15% roughly.
What page do you want?
Um, page three.
Okay.
Um, at the bottom, it talks about non-bypassable charges, this kind of, and, you know, obviously there's a lot of information here, so I'm not gonna. But it's basically the consu-, uh, customer charge and the energy efficiency charge and the energy assistance program charge.
All those things on the bill that nobody.
Little, there's these little charges on the bill and we can't credit against those. For you, it doesn't really matter because you use so much power that it doesn't even come into play ultimately because we can't even allocate enough credits to cover all of your power with the non-bypassables removed.
So sell me on what you're gonna do with these in 30 years.
Sure, well.
And don't tell me now. I don't, I'm.
Could I just?
We're gonna, everybody's gonna be mad at me if I don't shut up.
Okay, I, I won't.
But I really am concerned about, everybody thinks, because you're saying solar, it's green because they're using the sun. Okay, well, I can go out and get a suntan and, but there's more to it than that. And I want, I want to dig deeper and I want people to understand what we're really doing here. That's what I want.
Wait, not right now, though.
Well.
That's fine.
I just, I just.
I have, I have some responses, but I can hold back.
We've, we've taken some time. I'm gonna let everybody else speak. And if you wanna, if you wanna.
I'd love to chat with you at some point.
If you wanna close it up quick in a two-minute thing, that's great, but let's let everybody else ask.
Yeah.
Sorry. Um, Priscilla.
Um, yeah, I, I'm not truly, totally understanding. Um, and this may sound like stupid questions, but I know that I've talked to people about, like, when they do it on their own land, they have their, their solar things. And then, um, they use it basically during, at their high units. But if they have extra, then that power goes to like Green Mountain Power. And then if they need it at other times of the day when they don't, they sell it back to them at a higher rate. Um, it, does this power come directly to the schools or, or how does that work?
Yeah, that's a great question. No, and the, and the way. Yeah, that's a great question. No, and the, and the way you, your neighbors or whoever is, has it, is the exact same way this is doing it. Where the electrons that are being produced from these systems don't necessarily go right into the house. They go onto the grid. These electrons are just gonna go onto the grid. And they're gonna be used amongst the grid, right, right locally, mo- mostly. I mean, they're not gonna go very far. And what Green Mountain Power does is they act as a battery of sort. So they are essentially, if you have a house and they're producing solar energy, it's going onto the grid, that power is being credited to that fo-, those folks' power bill. And they're still taking power from the grid the exact same way they were before the solar went on their roof. The solar is just producing energy that's going on to the grid. And for every kilowatt hour that they produce, they're getting a credit for it. The exact same thing we're talking about here. And that's the vast majority of the way solar is done in Vermont. That is what net metering is. The only other way you can do it is where you have a, what's called a behind-the-meter system, where essentially you would have to have a battery as well. And you would, you wouldn't be sending power to the grid. You would just be taking that solar energy and you'd be using it when you can use it. And when you can't use it, you're actually putting in your battery in your basement and then using it when you need it later on. Net metering is extremely popular because Green Mountain Power is reliable and you don't need to have the battery. And they're gonna credit you with the rate that you get for net metering, which is, it changes depending on the size of the system. In this case, it's around 13 cents.
Okay, but that means we have no control about if Green Mountain Power raises.
Oh, sorry.
The cost of what they are selling to us because it's going through them. Am I understanding right?
So the rate that Green Mountain Power, you pay Green Mountain Power, we don't affect. Essentially, what we do is we, every kilowatt hour that we create, we just create a 13 cents worth of credit that we're applying to your bill, a financial credit that we're applying to your bill. If Green Mountain Power costs go through the roof, we're still gonna be saving you roughly $24,000 a year, but you might be spending a lot more on power. And that has nothing to do with this system. The way you receive power is exactly the same whether you sign up with us or not. And it's not gonna change anything. So if you were to sign up and our project were to have a major malfunction and go offline, it's, you might not get savings for a month or two, but you're not gonna lose power. There's not gonna be any disruption in terms of the way you receive power. Um, so is that essentially you, you're gonna get a rate for every kilowatt hour that the system produces. That rate gets applied to your bill. And for every dollar you have credited towards your bill, you pay the project 90 cents. So you, you're gonna save money that way.
Karen, did you have your hand up?
I'm not sure I answered that that well.
Yes, uh, no, I think your point, Molly, is a good one. I do. I think that, you know, when you have your conference to talk about what kinds of, you know, what are these made out of and what's gonna happen to them, I think is actually a great question. Um, you know, for me, it's always what's the alternative for us? Um, you know, we still have to be green ourselves. We have to reduce the amount of electricity we use. We have to think about passive solar in our houses and, you know, stuff like that. I mean, I, so I, I just, um, I think those are good questions. And I still think that this idea of what's green, um, nuclear power is not green. Um, and that's it, it's green. Yes, and that's what I wanted to say. And so where are we, you know, in terms of what is green and not green and all of that stuff? To me is, it's a, it's a sense of what's more green than something else. And, but I do think, Molly, what you had to say is important.
Jack, I'm gonna let you speak now.
Okay, thank you. Um, the devil is in the details in these things. It just is. And, you know, things like, uh, a- and there's a number of things to factor in. I, I, I'm gonna formally, uh, move that we refer this item to the Supervisory Union's Finance Committee for their assessment, uh, beginning, uh, uh, in March or earlier if they think they can do it. Uh, and I'm hoping I get a second on that because this does require detailed analysis. I mean, for example, uh, I was, there was a project in Grafton that was very controversial about a wind farm development. The wind, I support wind. I'm probably one of the few people in my town that does. Unfortunately, the wind farm where they were going to build it was sheltered on three sides by mountains that were at least 500 feet higher than the top of the wind, uh, than, than the wind turbulence were gonna be, which means you weren't gonna generate a whole hell of a lot of anything. You know, we live in an area where, uh, we live in what's known as a, uh, a fog zone in, uh, in the upper valley, the Connecticut River Valley, which means that during periods of peak use in our area, we have, we're fog-bound in places like, uh, like, uh, the high school and Route 5. Uh, I'd like to, we need to know more details about how this net metering would actually affect our bills because our, our highest use, we don't have air conditioning and solar is great for air conditioning, but is it great for us? Will we benefit? Uh, as I said, the devil's in the details. We're not gonna get into the details tonight. Uh, maybe this all works and this is the best deal in the world, but I think that it needs real fiscal analysis. I don't think we can do that kind of analysis before, uh, budgets are completed. And I'd like the, uh, folks we've assigned to do those kind of analyses to take a hard look at it. So I made my motion to move, to-
I'd like you to just, um, repeat that, so I think what you said was move to have the WN issue finance committee, um, look into this.
Evaluate and report back to the SU.
Evaluate and report back.
I was raising my hand a second for motion.
Okay, so before we go any further, there's a gentleman in cyber world that's got his hand up that's been-
You have a motion in a second, so you've got to.
Yep, I cannot let him speak.
Well, you're gonna have discussion now, yeah.
Yeah, I want to have discussion. So I would like to let Peter, um, speak if you'd like to before we call a vote on this.
Okay, thank you. Uh, two things I wanted to, to point out. First of all, I first spoke to your board about this three and a half years ago. And there's the real cost to delay. I know it seems, often seems prudent to delay until you know more, but it, it's costing money because at that same, about that same time, uh, the town of Rockingham, the village of Bell's Falls and the library all signed up for net metering agreements. And at the time, the savings were much higher. They were closer to 20%. And so by delay, uh, you've lost some of that savings. Uh, and if any of you have any questions about how the bills work, that side of things, uh, I encourage you to just talk to the, uh, accounts payable person, uh, in town hall or the person who does that for the library, because they've been, they've been paying these bills for al- almost three years now. But it, by just putting it off, you're, you're, you're reducing your chance of getting this benefit at no cost to the schools, which is a, a pretty amazing deal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can, can I just add quickly? And I know this is gonna make me probably sound bad. Um, and I'm, I'm prepared for that. Um, you know, we're offering the, the two solar projects. The one in Rockingham, there, there's no real time crunch. We're building that next year. Due diligence, please do as much as you can. The, the Novus Allen Solar Project is gonna flip the switch next month. Um, so we have other customers who would be taking that power if you can't make a decision. I've been holding it off because I've been working with the, I just, I, I, I want to work with you folks. Um, I think it makes sense. Um, so w- we can't wait till March. I think the, the word was on, on the Novus Allen Solar Project, on Novus Rockingham, the Rock Pit Solar, sure. That's no problem at all. Um, so I just, there is a bit of a time crunch on being able to take both projects if that's something you want. And I, I, you know, but I just thought it'd be worth mentioning.
Okay. All right, I understand. Does everybody understand?
Mm-hmm.
So we have a motion on, uh, floor. Uh, Jack has moved to have the WN issue finance committee evaluate and report back to the board. I'm not gonna, we didn't really put a timeframe, did he?
He did in the first motion, not in the second.
Okay, so we're gonna go with the second.
No, we're going with the second.
Jack's really in charge, but he's not here, so we're gonna go with the second one. Um, let's have a roll call. Um, Jim. You mean Jim's not? Jim McCullough?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Kathy?
She's not.
She's not a member. Okay, Kathy, they tell me you're not a voting member, so let's go to Lynn.
Stain.
Hardee?
Aye.
Brenda? Chris?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Huh?
Doesn't matter how I vote, we've already passed.
No, it matters. Karen?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Hey, hey, you didn't forget me.
Oh, Jack!
I wanted to say no, but you got the flag.
How do you vote, Jack?
Uh, I think aye would be good.
All right. Oh, shoot, making us a tough job tonight.
Send the contract to the superintendent. Yeah, they have it. They have it. Um, they had it. Yeah, I can send another one directly to you if you'd like. Yeah, I got it. Okay. Great, yep. Well, thank you all very much. I really appreciate the time. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Allison. Be good to go home, don't you?
Yeah, you can go.
Thank you.
Bye, Jim. See ya.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I would like to move, if I've kept up with this. Are we ready, you guys?
Hey, folks, let us, I can share, maybe I can share.
We gotta stop talking, guys. It's, trying to move on.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, so I have 6A Superintendent's Report.
So, um, we're gonna bundle, uh, we're actually gonna be talking about, um, 7A at this time, um, with, uh,
Didn't tell me that.
Well, that was my report and so I didn't, I, I, I-
You're good.
I forgot I saw it.
All right, so we're moving, um, so we're gonna do 7A preschool administration offices into the superintendent's report?
Yeah, so hang on, I'm gonna figure out how to clear my screen here. That's always a challenge. I apologize. All right, you all can see yourselves, correct? So you can see that?
Nope.
All right. So, let me get that to. Um, so, uh, we sent out, um, today the finalized, um, draft of, of what we had, uh, for the feasibility and business plan, um, that we had done by Heart of the Child, uh, looking at an early childhood's education center, um, and the feasibility and, and, um, of that plan. So, um, just to kind of go over a little bit, um, what we asked them to look at was, uh, you know, what was the potential of a full-day, full-year childcare market, um, that offered high-quality, um, childcare and, and education, um, that's operated by the WNESU, um, folks, um, located somewhere near Route 5. So that, that was kind of how we looked at it. And so we asked them to look at, um, a market. And so a market meaning just where our catchment area of kiddos. Um, so we asked them to look at, um, both Vermont and New Hampshire, so the area, so 14 towns. We asked them to exclude New Hampshire, um, when looking at it. Uh, we asked them to exclude New Hampshire and then Springfield when looking at it. Because Springfield has already a large, um, amount of, uh-
A lot of children and a lot of childcare.
Yeah, thank you, so. And then, um, just look at our four towns and what would those, uh, four towns that make up WNESU look like. So, um, so can't make this a lot bigger, so I apologize. But these are the, basically the towns that I just talked about. Uh, so you've got the 16 towns, the 14 towns, the 13, which excludes Springfield, and then the four towns. And so when we look at all 16 towns, and, and I may ask Jennifer to, to, to speak to this a little bit, um, but what they found was that there was, um, looking at all 16 towns, there was a high demand or need for, um, full-year, full-day, uh, early education, um, looking at the, the, the 16 towns. And, um, and Jennifer, if I'm reading this correctly, the demand is, is, is seven, is, is 506? Is that for infant? Is that how that's reading?
The, you're on the 16?
Yep.
It's, there's 122 full-day, full-year slots for about 337 infants. So that means that the supply is 36% of the estimated demand. Current infant care supply. Uh, so only considering high-quality supply, current infant care supply meets 28% of demand.
So, so in this report, supply is equal to children that would access the, this, any, any type of quality care?
No, supply is the care.
That's the care, thank you.
Supply what's available, right? Is what's available, is the number of places for children. And the demand is the children who need those spaces.
Okay.
Um, and so then for toddler, which is the next, I'm looking at the very bottom, you all have this report.
Yes.
Which is finalized and Andy, a while ago, and Andy sent it out today because they only sent it to me. And I thought that they sent it to me and Andy. And it was a miscommunication and I do apologize for that. Um, the current toddler care supply is meets 61% of the demand. And current pre-K supply meets 67%. So supply is not meeting demand. And then it just goes through, this is only the Mont town in or near the SU. So that's taking out New Hampshire.
And so what was found is that in every single way you want to slice the pie, there was a higher demand than supply at every level. Uh, so infant, toddler and precinct. And, um-
And when you look at just the SU.
Which this is.
Right, that's the final one. Infant care supply meets 16% of demand. Toddler care supply meets 53%. And pre-K supply meets 39%. And it's high-quality, high-quality. All of those numbers are giving up for high-quality. And it's on the tops of these charts, which again, you all have and are available. It's broken out really specifically. So, as, um, as David said, and as we told our committee back in, on October 6th, from the closet at Wyndham, at a Westminster School, where I was during that meeting, the, there's less high-quality childcare in our region than needed. Dramatically less, sort of no matter how you slice it. So that's one thing. And then Heart of the Child did a business plan, looking at group sizes, staffing and operating offices.
Right, so when they, when they based their, um, their study in the business plan, it was looking at a net income at the end of about $4,000. But that was dependent on quite a few variables that, that Mr. Clark mentioned. Um, and that as a committee, we, we pretty much figured out when we were looking at it. Um, and so a lot of that is, um, that, that 20% of all the toddlers, infants and toddlers, would need to pay full tuition, which is, uh, the equivalent, it's, it's $489 a week. Um, and that's, uh, 20, oh, you know, just under $25,000. And that's for families that make $85,000 or more and ha- and they're a family of three.
Right, the Vermont childcare subsidy system. supports families to pay for childcare, and it's based on income levels, and the, it's broken out in laborious, difficult detail, you need your glasses and a ruler to read it in the, um, report, but it's there, the different levels of income that would pay different amounts, so some people would pay far less, and some people would pay a little more, a little more, a little more, and then at a family of three earning $85,000, they would have to pay $489 a week for infant and toddler, and in order to sustain this proposed building, this proposed program, we would need 20% of the infants and toddlers enrolled to be above that income level and willing to pay $489 a week for high quality infant. Um, and the same with pre-K, a little less money. Um,
And it's less because of staffing, you need more staff.
Pre-K takes fewer staff.
Yep.
Another takeaway was that this is viable if it remains 99% enrolled, and the big one, which again, Mr. Clark brought up, assumes that, um, 50% of the children that would be enrolled in this program would have left other private programs that exist in the community, which clearly, for anyone who knows me or us, the committee, is not something that we want to do, we don't, we don't, we want families to have choices, we don't want to be taking children from other programs.
Well, and I just wanna add that, and Karen, I'll get to you real quick, I just wanted to add that that was a question that was brought up before we did the feasibility study, would we be looking at possibly closing down private programs, and that was never our intention of doing, and this study came out to show that, to make it viable, that would be the only way to do it, and, and that was never our intentions.
And they, can I just say one more thing before you go Karen, and they tried to run it, they're plugging it all into a spreadsheet, and they tried and tried to do it, and the only way they could even bring it to this level of tuition was with assuming that all of those other things, that the children coming from other programs, the enrollment staying that high, and the tuition being.
First, I was just asking if these slideshows can be shared with us?
Yeah.
So that's number one. The second is, I'm always thinking about collaboration. You know, we, it's like, we can't do that because it's gonna do something to the, to these folks and so forth and so on, and I, I'm trying to figure out, again, how we can work collaboratively so that so that kids can get served, I mean, infants and families and so forth can get served, and I, so that's all I'm thinking.
You're beating, you're beating me to a slide.
Oh yes.
Funny as, because, because, um, so, um, let me just get through that, and I'll get, so, so the study demonstrates there's a huge need in our community, uh, for quality early childhood education. It also demonstrated that it's fiscally not viable for us, WNESU, to provide birth through five early childhood education, and not cost effective for families, right? So we know that if we were to run it the way they plugged their numbers in on the business plan,
Using our, sorry Andy, using our CBA
Yes.
for the staff, and using for the compensation, and all of that, it just, it's just not viable.
So we walked away with, you know, how can we, this Karen is getting right to it, to where your eyes, you know, how can we address this high need? Um, you know, and, and keep our pledge, our promise to engage, educate, prepare all students, become self-directed learners, and create a problem solvers. And so, really, our recommendation is to develop a community team, um, to, to look at this, you know, dive deeper into this, but also look at what are some financially responsible ways to increase pre-K hours without reducing the number of students, without reducing the number of students served. So what we're looking at that is, we don't wanna, right now we offer part-time, right?
Depends on, full-time defined by the state, part-time defined by families.
We're not offering full day for our families, so how can we increase that, because that's what the, the demand says, and get more kids being able to access pre, pre-K, but not stripping away what we already have. So that's kinda where we're looking, so that's, that's really what we're, we're, we think is the next direction, is to look at, how do we, how do we achieve providing for our students, and, and doing that through a community team, you know, with stakeholders, board members, parents, community, you know, members to come together to say, how do we make this work?
Another, another childcare providers that you're worried about, that we're taking people away from those places, you know, that's what I heard you say.
Yes.
Yeah, so,
In our community, yes.
Yeah, and that's what I meant, that those, it seems to me, those conversations, because we're losing, we're losing young families because they're going to places where certain things are provided. So, that, that seems to need to be in the mix.
And, and Jennifer already does a wonderful job collaborating with many of those programs, and then our early special education collaborates with many of those programs. So, we need to increase that, but there's also that need to, to really get that high quality education piece up, because we know that the impact, if we can, if we can intervene and, and, and and provide that education early on, we have the potential of reducing, um, costs to, to, to education in the future, so, but. So that, that's kinda where we are, um, what I'm also gonna do, I just didn't get a chance to do, uh, before I, because I was gonna put this link online, I will, or this, um, slideshow online, I, I'm also gonna link the full study into, I got the picture down, I know. So, um, that's why I haven't done it, so, but.
Are we good?
Priscilla.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take this down so we can see.
One thing I'd like, um, the committee to look at is, is also whether the people that are providing in the community would want to work in uh, facilities that would increase our capability to provide us, because maybe some of those home situations aren't what they really want to be dealing with, but they're doing it to help our community, so they might be interested in also, and then we would not be cutting into the levels of, of private care, so that's another possibility.
That is a possibility, and I, I very much, I very much want to work in a group to study this and to figure it out, and I, I don't wanna do that in this moment, as you know.
But I said the committee.
The, um, the community care providers referenced in this study are licensed care providers, licensed to the state of Vermont, so it's not kinship care, it's not that the many grandparents and loving neighbors that take care of children, it's the licensed childcare providers, and then when it talks about high quality, those are childcare providers that have attained, um, Vermont has a quality rating system, that have attained four or five stars in the quality rating system. And I, we should, we should partner with them and invite them to join.
Chris?
So I'd just like to thank the folks that put all the work into this project, even though it didn't
pan out.
But, boy, we got a lot of information out of it, and thank you for your time on it. My suggestion would be that this committee be not a committee of the board.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, that the administration could convene it, that way you can get the principals that need to be involved, and
I always have their board number on.
Oh yeah, 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 that's what I was referring to. But I don't think it should be at the board level.
Thank you.
So I think it's, you know, Right. I got excited for a minute, because, you know, my daughter's a senior in college now, but, I mean, I was a, I'm a working mom, I have to work at 50 hours a week, and you know, it was probably the hardest thing I did, raising a little kiddo, was trying to make sure that she was safe and that, you know, she wasn't stuck in front of a TV all day and
Eating marshmallows on the couch.
Well, I was, I was, you know, I, I was a supporter of this, because this was, this was huge for our community, and you know, I just did some numbers when I saw that, you know, what they had to pay per week, and you know, both parents gotta make at least 20 bucks an hour, you know? And, so, I get it, but, um, I do hope that we don't just stop, I hope that we, we continue to try to to find answers on, on how we can do a better job, because it only makes, at the end of the day, you know, some people probably think, well, you're just worrying about babysitting a kid, but the truth of the matter is, it's gonna affect our graduation rate and everything else if we do a better job when they're younger. And, you know, it, it's important, so.
Thank you. Jack had his name down, Margie, and then I heard Jigs at one point, so. So just that was the order I had.
Jack?
You're muted, Jack. Keep me muted.
I just wanted to compliment, uh, the, uh, team that did this, there's been a lot of skepticism about whether or not people put their thumb on the scale to run the numbers, and that's the guy who proposed that we do the study. I'm disappointed, maybe not surprised, disappointed at the results, but I appreciate the honesty that everybody, uh, used to put this together and to accept the data, I mean, I, one could argue that we spent $20,000, uh, per student uh, in our system, because we don't have a, a viable pre-K program, you could argue that we could increase efficiencies, uh, by having more students in our system if they were attracted, but that gets, that gets really hard to demonstrate, and it gets very speculative, when you're, when, when you're looking at 99% participation rate, and you're still only showing a one-half of 1% uh, to the positive, uh, in the best of all possible circumstances, it's kinda dead in the water uh, in the model that we're looking at, so, yes, I do encourage us to figure out a model, because we really do need to have some sort of program for young parents, and apparently this isn't the one, and it's too damn bad, but there it is, thanks.
Margie, you're next.
I was just gonna say, I mean, you guys can see I have little kids, and they're watching TV and eating marshmallows right now.
I bet they don't do it all day.
Well, no, because I work and I pay for childcare for the, for the youngest. And, I think that, you know, what you were saying about those high quality people with the four or five stars, I, I think, I mean, from what I've heard around here, it's very challenging to get those four and five star ratings, it's really, there are tight parameters on that, so I bet there aren't very many four and five star, uh, uh, care providers. And I think that when we looked at those numbers, you know, we have a big concern about, um, competing with those providers, but there's such a huge need, you could see that the need vastly exceeds the, the number of care providers, so I don't think we should worry that much about outcompeting those, you know, current care providers, there's plenty of demand for, for to go around, you know, you could provide pre-K and even younger than that um, care, and I really don't think you'd, you know, it, within the school districts, and I know I've said this thousand times at our Westminster meeting, but there are a, a lot of schools that provide pre-K, and they just simply put it into their budget, it's written into the budget. That's how they pay for it. Um, and, i- i- it's, it's certainly imputney, it's not, I mean, the grammar school is still here, there's several other providers, it's not even coming close to meeting the demand for childcare, so I just don't think we should worry about that too much. And that's all I had to say, and thank you, the work that was really great, thank you for doing those, uh, fe, those studies, I, I really liked that, that detailed information, I appreciate that.
And I think Jigs, I heard him say something, I don't know if he had a comment.
Jim, do you have something?
Of course. The, uh, you see that, uh, as you know, I was skeptical about this from the beginning, but, uh, well, the beginning, I didn't hear, hear about it until much after the beginning, but anyway, there's two issues here, and, and I'm, I'm commenting specifically on a comment that, that Chris made about this proposed committee. Uh, we currently provide a pre-K program for our children, okay? All kids in our four towns are eligible for, uh, our current pre-K program, okay? The, what we don't provide, and what we shouldn't be providing as a school system, is daycare for babies. That's an issue that is, I think you showed in your statistics, that's where the most critical need is, particularly for cost effective, uh, daycare. And that's something that the federal government has not come up with a solution to. Our state government has talked about it a, a lot, and has not come up to a, with a solution for it. I believe it's economics, but, uh, I don't know enough about it to say that. So, what I, what I object to is having a committee that's studying daycare for babies under the sponsorship of the school department. I don't think that's appropriate. I think if you could, if you could get the towns of Rockingham, Westminster, Athens, and Grafton as a town to form this committee, because obviously this is something that the taxpayers have to weigh in on. Then I could see the school department participating in that town-sponsored, uh, study. But I think it's absolutely inappropriate for our school department to be the leader and organizer of a, a, a study for daycare. I want us to do a better job educating our kids from P, pre-K to 12. And, and we are, and we are woefully suffering in that area. So, that's my comment, thank you.
Thank you Jim.
I can just quickly respond to them.
End of your first, then Chris.
So, so the only thing I, I wanted to correct there, um, Jigs, was that our recommendation is that a committee look at pre-K and how we can, we can meet the needs of pre-K. And that was specifically in that last slide, we are not proposing that we look at infant or toddler care at this time. And I have shared, or, or, I have shared this report with the town of Rockingham, their planning, um, so that they can incorporate it into their, um, the work that they're doing, and so that they could utilize this, exactly what you're saying, is to, i- i- it's a need in our community, we're the receiver of this, of, of those kids, we need to make sure that they have, they're coming to us prepared, so.
Well, then I, I do, I do think, uh, excuse me, I do think that board participation would be helpful.
I agree.
Responsible for that now, I think it'd be very helpful, so.
Chris, you're next.
Everyone else please, I guess.
Awesome, the doctors.
Uh, so, I never said anything about infants, uh, either, and I actually am not particularly comfortable with the public schools being in that realm myself, but that's just my personal opinion. Um, and, um, you have to say, I would say, if there are folks out there who are thinking of opening a, a care center, this document, this needs assessment is a public document, all you have to do is request it from the WNESU. So it's a resource for people who are interested in having their own business about it, or even just learning more about it, so.
We're actually gonna post it on the website, so, we can get it there.
Good.
I saw Deb has her hand.
Deb, right.
Yes, I, I only had, had to, um, had to just emphasize that we are working on the town plan, I am the Rockingham Plan Chair, and we have a great deal of emphasis on, um, daycare needs in our community, um, in order to make sure that they're sufficient out there, we know that that's been a tough call ever since COVID, really shut down a lot of, um, places and some never reopened, and we have a great deal of younger children who need that help, so, um, there is a great deal of emphasis, as Andy said, he has also, um, worked with us on the, uh, housing chapter, um, and in education, as, in the education chapter. in the education chapter as well. So a great deal of that is incorporated. And, and the findings of tonight will be discussed probably tomorrow evening at the Planning Commission, which will happen at 6:00, 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Karen?
Yeah, I, I'm curious about whether there was demographics around what I would call class, meaning economic, people's economics, and how that influences, you know, what we're planning on doing for pre-K. And, and I, you know, I just, I don't know the, you know, the cost and the amount of money that needs to be, be used. But I do know that there are people in our communities who can't afford their kids to go anywhere, which means that they can't work. Somebody can't work. And I just, so I'm, I'm thinking about, I know we're schools, but we're, we care about the community, and I'd love to have a little bit more study done on what that means in terms of people not being able to be living in our community because they have to go somewhere else for jobs. I mean, it's just a whole, you know, we don't talk about class a lot, what I call class structure, and economics and all of that. So that's constantly going on for me. I know we're not supposed to deal with little ones and all of that stuff. I get that, but, because of this study, but I worry a lot.
Yeah. I was grateful that the town of Rockingham reached out to invite us as a school district to be part of that planning and to work with them collaboratively, because it is all, right, jobs and housing and childcare and school, it's all together, and you can't have one without the other. And, and, and one influences the other. And so I'm, I'm really looking forward to the continued collaboration and working with the other towns on how we can meet the needs of all of our community.
So I, first of all, I echo the thanks. I'm glad that we've done this. I feel a sense of urgency, though. I am really worried about what's going on with young families in our community, and it's gotten worse, not better, with the impact of COVID and all of the, a kind of breakdown in a lot of the care for, for children. I'd like us to move ahead quickly to do another analysis. We've been given the spreadsheets. Those can be used, and to focus only on the pre-K audience for now, for the Superior Union, and really try to figure out from a business point of view what it would take to serve our pre-K audience, not infants and toddlers, but pre-K for full-time childcare, early learning, pardon me, full-time early learning opportunities for them. Because I too hear over and over again from young families in this area, 10 hours a week is not enough. So we have to figure out how to provide what really is full-time. So we've got a lot of data now. Let's run the numbers. And I'm just saying, let's not drag it out. I'd really like to dive into it pretty quickly with a broader group of people from the community.
And the truth is, that was available 17 years ago when I needed it, but I didn't use it because I couldn't truck my kiddo at 8:30 in the morning, pick her up at 11:30 in the morning.
Exactly.
So I, I couldn't use it. And so, yeah, we need to, or I would like to see us. I think we need to start to move on here. So Jack, you got one more thing, or are we moving on?
You're muted, Jack.
We're moving.
Okay, that, that, you know, I think we've proven that tuition-based reimbursement model is not gonna work. That doesn't solve the problem, but there's still that need. And the people that need, that have the greatest need can't afford it. You know, I, I kind of, I, I celebrate the results of this because I thought that's what we'd get, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't be talking and talking to the state, talking to our constituents about whether or not pre-K should be a right. I think that it's, I think it's public education. I think it's an important part of public education. I don't think it should be means-tested or anything. I think it should just be. We were talking about an 8% to 10% rise in our cost for the running of this, of, of the SU. The total cost I thought, I saw on the screen was in the neighborhood of $2 million, $2 million and change. Well, that's kind of, that's, that's the equivalent of the bill that, you know, the increase that we're probably going to be seeing across all the schools of the SU. So, and we're gonna ask people to pay for that. And the question I have is, when are we going to talk to people honestly and say, this is a cost, this is a cost we need to bear. It's a cost that will help us develop our communities, and it should be a right. Period. Thanks.
Okay, Priscilla?
Yeah, I think that the one thing that we're not remembering and not considering is we've just been through two years of, of COVID, where it's impacted our, our children all the way up through because they haven't been in school. They haven't been provided a really good, sound, in-person education. And here we're talking about, you know, the pre-K, and the pre-K should be our emphasis, obviously. And I think if we just, like Cheryl said, separate the pre-K from the infant thing and figure out some way of servicing them, that's where we're at right now. And I absolutely support the fact that we need to do that. Thanks.
Andy, do you have anything else?
On this? No, I don't. Well, the last one, well, we kind of like, I mean, the, the one thing I will say is.
Is this your report?
This was my report. The one other thing I'm just gonna add to it is, because I've mentioned it at the other board meetings, so the Smarter Balance Test, Sback, that is the state mandated test that we, we give our students. The state announced at the beginning of October, I want to say around October 5th, but I, that they could be a little off, that they had awarded a contract to a new company, and that we had until October 22nd to grab our data, otherwise it was gonna go away. And so we did a data dump. We're, we're parsing it out. Some of what system allowed you to do was sort that data, so now we have to learn how to sort it without the system. But there is a new company that we're working with. I can't think of the actual name, but its old name was Measured Progress, who used to do the kneecaps. So there's really only two big companies that, that do a lot of these assessments. So that'll be coming, you know, it's gonna happen this year, but we're working on sorting through that data so we can get it out to all the different districts. So that's it.
Thank you. So I believe we are at committee update six seasons. And building and grounds has not met. Would you help me get a date?
I will help you get a date. You tell me when. No, we will do it. We'll do it and we'll get it out there. Could I just mention, because it, it was mentioned earlier, we've been working at the high school here, looking at the science labs, and we had an architect out here to look at the area and to provide us a bid for a feasibility study. We received that a couple of days ago. And it's to, to do the feasibility study, and that would be to give us drawings and everything of the area of how we can prove it. Came out to be about $14,000. So it's something that I've given to John and Mr. Brodley, and we'll go back to look at, is that a Haver thing or something we'll bring back to high school? But it does affect all buildings and grounds, so.
Okay, thank you. So we'll get a date for building and grounds committee meeting, and we'll, we'll get that email sent out. Finance, we've already taken care of. So we have, so the way this is written, Priscilla, is, you know, we have policies on here, but we also have a whole bunch of policies to be approved in a new business. So is there, do we have anything under policies to report?
Justin, the next meeting is November 9th at 5:30.
November 9 at 5:30 at the SU office. Okay. And we've taken care of preschool. 7B says per diem. Jack?
That was one of them. Jack, that, that was one of yours.
Yeah, this, this came up because there was some, and Andy, I was looking for something for you. Apparently there was some question or controversy about per diem compensation, and has that been resolved?
It's been resolved and, and addressed.
All right. I, I, I just know that, that was floating around in a bunch of emails, and just wanted to make certain that everybody ended up happy. There was no grievance at all, just, I got it.
No grievance. Grievance, it was resolved a few weeks ago.
Excellent. Just want to clarify that because there was some confusion. Thanks.
All right. So now we are moving on to, we've done 8A Nova Sedentary. We're going to 8B, review and approve policies, and I would like to turn that over to Priscilla, please.
Okay, so I would make a motion that we approve the policies D1, D1A, D5, D35, B35, F2, C9, and C13 that are listed on our agenda, and that I would like to speak to it.
I'd like to, I'd like to move to approve that unless you've already, you just did that, Priscilla?
Just did that, Jack.
There's a motion on.
Consider this a second.
Okay, and I'll speak to it. The first ones, D1, D1A, and D5 were posted on 9/28/22. F2, FB35, D35, which is the same policy, but the committee felt they should be in both places, was posted on 9/30/22. And C9 and C13 were posted on 10/14/22. And everybody should have received those in their packets. Yes, are there any questions?
So I've got two hands on the screen. I got Deb.
Emily, you calling on me? Okay. Yes, two things. Number one, D5, I don't understand in the 21st century why we don't have animated virtual vivisections so we don't have to actually touch the animal for people who, who have, are squeamish about wanting to be excused. And second, I would like to know, where's the flag policy? But that's a separate question. Thank you.
I can speak to the first. We, we do offer alternatives. So if a student does not wish to do an actual dissection, they are able to do a virtual type of dissection. This primarily now only applies to an anatomy and physiology class. There's no longer the, the dissection in biology that most of us went through, if you think of your biology class, because biology is the study of life, and the theory behind that is dissection is, is part of, alongs in anatomy, physiology, so. So the flag policy has already been approved.
Not sure why I missed that. Thank you.
And these are all required policies.
Okay. Um, Jack, did you have your hand up, or were you?
I had, I had failed to get my hand down from the last.
Karen?
I'm going to move the question unless there's a real objection.
Yeah, we already, I already called on Karen, so we gotta let her speak first, and then we'll move the question.
Could you explain animal dissection to me in a, in what, what class, what, how old are the students, where is this, and what kind of animals are we talking about? I'm just curious.
So, so I can't speak to the exact animals that are, that might be dissected. Typically, we're talking high school, and we're talking the upper part of high school. So anatomy and physiology is typically junior, senior type of class.
I remember frogs. This is what I wanted to say to you. So I'm trying to, animals, that's not, that's not an animal.
Frog's an animal.
Could be. Okay, okay. As long as we're talking broad, you know, animal, it's animal veg, I think, anyway, that's fine. I just was curious because it hasn't come up before in.
Okay, so the question has been moved, and we are going to vote. Jim?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Hardy? Jack?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Chris?
Yep.
Karen?
Yes, aye.
Priscilla?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
All right. All of your policies have been passed. All right. I will say that Priscilla has put a ton of work into these policies. I mean, we get there, she's just like, I've been reading these for four days, and this is what we have to do, and this is what we have to do, and what do you think of this? And I'm like, I'm lost. But hold on, let me read it again. So, nice job. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
The last thing I have on here is retirees.
So we have two, two teachers for WNESU who have announced their retirement and wish to be eligible for the $7,500 earlier, not early, but retirement bonus. And so those two teachers are Roberta Martin, who works in our Early Childhood Special Education, and Kelly Spalding, who is a Title I teacher here at the high school. So we're sorry to see both of them leave, but we'll push them on.
And we don't need to take any action, or you're taking care of all that?
Yep. Just announcing it.
Okay, so I think we've made it to director's comments. Jim?
I'm good. Thank you.
Deb?
Okay, I guess my only comment is that policy F34, flags on school property, I just went to the website. It says the date it was adopted, May 18, 2022, date of, was warned. Date adopted is not there, and it's still on the website as a policy that has not, says warned or adopted, but not yet organized, and it's still listed as not adopted according to the document. Just saying.
We'll have to go back and check, Deb, because it was adopted. So anything that's up there that's warned and adopted is, but not organized, means it's, it's been approved.
Right, but there's no date on that document yet, so that's why.
I understand, and I apologize. We will, we will go back and find that date.
Thank you. Nope, nope, just director's comments. We don't have to answer.
Sorry, didn't mean to.
Lynn? All set?
See, you're muted, Lynn.
Sorry. I'm grateful again for what everybody has done on the, the childhood center project as well as on the policies. Lots of work has gone in, and thank you so much to everybody.
Hardy?
I'd just like to thank all the people on the various committees for all the work we've been doing in the last few weeks. Good job by everybody.
Jack?
I just want to echo Hardy's point and Lynn's, which is that we really made a point this year of empowering committees, and both the finance and the committee headed by Priscilla have shown why that's such a good idea. They've done a great job, and I thank them all. By the way, one committee hasn't met is the executive committee. So I want to make sure that we, we've got some stuff to do, and some of it involves Andy's compensation. We've got a number of other things. So let's talk about getting this together, because we've delayed it multiple times, and maybe that's on me, but I need availabilities from everybody. Thank you. Oh, by the way, Molly's done a really great job. Maybe, maybe we should be vacating the chair and giving this to her. Thanks a lot.
Chris?
I'm also.
Karen?
Just, I thought it was a stimulating meeting, and that because it had data to it, that we couldn't really respond to it, and I thank everybody for that work.
Priscilla?
I just want to appreciate every single member of all of our boards that, because I know they all do a lot of work, that the community doesn't realize how much everybody puts into it. So I want them aware of that. Keep in mind, we're in the middle of playoffs on a lot of the high school teams, and so any of the support the community can give, that would be great, too. On the news tonight, a sad issue was that there is a student, 16-year-old in Massachusetts, named Colleen Weaver, that apparently has, is being looked for, and they mentioned the Brattleboro area. She, since they're so close to us, if anybody hears anything about her, it might be good to keep that in mind. And just that kindness that we need to go out to everybody. And just that kindness that we need to go out to everybody, because my sign was covered up when I walked in tonight about kindness, everybody, you don't know what the ripple causes as it goes out, because it was directing us to the school board meeting. But that ripple, if it starts with you, it will go out, and you don't know what, just one little tiny thing. I gave a hug to someone once, that I never even thought about it. About six months later, she was just telling me how much it meant, and I didn't even think about it. So if you can do something nice each day, try to do that. Thank you.
So we have at 3:30 Friday, we have a field hockey game. It's playoff season. And at 7 o'clock Friday, we have a football game. The football team is number one. The field hockey team is fourth in their division, and the place is going to be jumping up and down, so.
Where are those games traveling?
So no, field hockey's here. Field hockey's here, you know, in the backfield, and it's, they're both home games. Snack Shack will be ready to feed y'all, and, you know, if there's, if there's any reason for anybody to come out and support our kids, all kids are important, but those kids work super hard to get where they are, and.
What was the time, morning again?
3:30 for field hockey and 7 for football. And there will be, my understanding is another football game the next week because of the standings for the football team home, so that'll be pretty exciting. So this has been a good meeting. Thank you, Jack, for trusting me with your, with your board. We have a date and time of next meeting. Do we have that?
16th is the third Wednesday. What's it supposed to be? Supposed to be the third?
The first and third. I don't know. We haven't been meeting on the first.
This week, we're all.
Jack, when do you need your next meeting to be?
16th would be the third.
Jack, do you want to just shoot for the 16th, or do you want to try and?
That's next week.
No.
You're muted.
Jack, you're muted.
What, sorry, I was talking and nothing happened. That happens a lot. The 16th would be fine. Really, what I need to know is your availability, Andy, because I know you've got some things you have to deal with.
So the week of the ninth, which would be two weeks from now, I would probably not be available.
Then, then let's do that 16th date. That sounds like what we're doing.
Okay. At 6:30, same place.
All that.
All right. Thank you. It is.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. It is 8:28, and we're going to adjourn. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.